I thought it was interesting that he talked about transformation, but he said he preferred stability over change. But I think what he was talking about, and he did use the word chaos, that we're not looking for chaos, we're not looking for friction or angst. What we're looking for is how to move forward, given what we know about the past. And that we need to be informed about the past because it really sets up what the legalities are in the present. I learned a lot of information, and it's easier to assimilate when someone's speaking with civility, with complete regard for rule of law and for where people are today. Not trying to gain something personally, and not trying to be accusatory or inflammatory. And I found his presentation to be very civil and very caring. And from my point of view, it seemed extremely accurate by looking at the documents that he presented and the people that he showed in his slide presentations and his video presentations who backed up his information.
It's not an easy task. And he's definitely come up with a lot of barriers and pushbacks from people. And so I think he's handled it quite well. And he's very professional about it.
Like how he said, you know, face the fears head-on and just get factual answers from the experts in those fields. It helps alleviate things. And I think, you know, a lot of the feedback too that I've gotten is, you know, it's such a huge, complex issue that folks don't even know where to start.
It's just how do we deal with this situation now that we know? And if we can accept the fact that there still is a kingdom of Hawaii and that it was never annexed, that there was occupation and there still is occupation, then how do we deal with that? And I was really impressed that he followed through with what he told us in the May 15 meeting with the Council of Regency and created the reconciliation or recognition of our current government. It's not a recognition of the state of Hawaii. It's a recognition of our form of government that we can move forward with the lawmaking we're doing at the state and county levels. And so that makes it a little less confusing for those of us in positions of policymaking and administration. But this needs to be a broader message than just Maui County Council and the people who were in the chambers. It needs to be really taken to all the counties, but also all the communities on every county. So that people understand what we're looking for, that we're looking for reconciliation, not retaliation. And that we can move forward as a community recognizing everybody's rights. I really like the fact that Dr. Tsai focused on the fact that this was not, it's not a racial issue. It's a, that the state of Hawaii or the kingdom of Hawaii is made up of residents of Hawaii. It doesn't specifically call you out for having Native Hawaiian blood or not having Native Hawaiian blood.
So I kind of see Hawaii Kingdom Law or our status as an independent neutral nation as giving us, you know, the lifelong residents who aren't going anywhere, the ability to have our own self-determination and to be able to, you know, clearly state what matters to us, clearly state where our sacred sites are, clearly state these things without, you know, the continental United States or the occupier, if you will, to be able to dictate what is important to us. I think that most people born and raised here, most people that move here and have a healthy respect for their culture and the way of life understand that the United States' priorities aren't necessarily our priorities. And not to say that they're not good priorities for the United States, but I don't think they're good priorities for Hawaii.
I'll speak to the denationalization that occurred after the so-called annexation or occupation of Hawaii. You know, as a third generation, I've seen in our kupuna and in our parents' generation where that was a very effective strategy. You know, they are very Americanized. They couldn't speak the Hawaiian language. They had to sing, say the Pledge of Allegiance every day before school starts. And they did not have this cultural education like we see a renaissance today. And the Hawaiian, Olelo Hawaii Hawaiian-speaking movement and going back to that national pride. And so we're seeing that renaissance. And I think that might be part of the deoccupation process and to instill national pride where it was once lost in past generations. So I want to be part of that, that process. And in my, in my position as a county council, we've, you know, whatever we can do to support that process.
The people who have their own self-determination, what they're able to do. And with the federal laws, like the Jones Act, a lot of times we're not acting in our best, own best interest. And so, you know, those cases where it's clearly because of an occupying force that we're not acting in our best, own best interest, I'd like to see what we can do to take steps so that we do act in our own best interest.
Yeah, I think one of the things, you know, that's happened in the past couple of decades is that there have been a lot of different definitions and interpretations of sovereignty and what that means for people. That's why I think there were something like 27 different sovereignty movements at one point. And it's because there was every extreme and then the folks in the middle. And I remember talking to people who told me, "Well, you know, when we get sovereignty back," which today we learned really never left. You know, the sovereign kingdom is here. It's how it's governed that's the question. But, you know, that nothing will change. And then I've had people tell me, you know, 20 years ago, "Oh yeah, nobody will be allowed to own property and everybody will have to leave who doesn't own property." So I think that's been one of the confusing things about sovereignty is what does that mean? Why are there so many definitions? And why are there groups fighting against each other to get what they perceive as the true sovereign nation back? Or the sovereign kingdom? So this, to me, the presentation today made a lot of sense. It was backed up by what appeared to be, and I'm not a legal expert, but to me, they look like legal documents and they were very convincing to, I think, to most of us council members.
Just to know that the Council of Regency exists so that the Council of Regency can represent a nation that is in exile at the international level. And I look forward to their Royal, the Royal Commission of Inquiry so that we can, before we start to heal some of the heva that a lot of people still feel and continue to manifest in their personal lives. I think we need to go into the process. And I think that the Royal Commission of Inquiry would be a good step towards identifying those challenges that we need to address.
Good being back here. Mahalo nui. The first time when I gave the presentation on May 15, it sparked a lot of questions from you. And these were really good questions. But we didn't have time to actually get into the details of it as I would have rather done in a presentation itself. That way, you folks can actually see this as the second step. The second step from the first that explained the situation, but now we're getting into the crux of the issue, how to proceed in light of this information. And that was an important question, very important. So the title of this presentation here is Stability Versus Change, right? Now, from my military experience, whenever you transition forces, one withdraws, the other goes in, what you want to maintain is stability. You don't want to change because if you move in making a change, you create confusion, right? In the military, and military people will know this, but I'll have to say what it is, you ultimately get what is called a Charlie Foxtrot, okay? And that's what you don't want. That's what you don't want. So what I'm going to be addressing here is how to address stability and still comply with the law, especially with the principle of what is called the rule of law, okay? So what I want to do is just briefly touch upon my, a quick review of what we covered on May 15, very brief, okay? So my academic qualifications, I'm a graduate of the Kamehameha Schools, 1982. In 1984, I graduated from New Mexico Military Institute with an associate's degree, where I also received a commission as a second lieutenant in the early commissioning program. In 1987, I received my bachelor's from the University of Hawaii in Sociology. My master's degree in Political Science from the University of Hawaii in 2004, specializing in international relations. And then my PhD degree in 2008 from the University of Hawaii, where my doctoral focus was on the Hawaiian Kingdom's existence, its continued existence under the laws of occupation, okay? Now, I was also admitted as an expert witness in seven cases, both civil and criminal. What ends up happening, if people don't know, is that you don't automatically be admitted as an expert. The opposing side has an opportunity to try to debunk. And if not, they're admitted. Judge Cardoza, in State of Hawaii versus English of the Second Circuit, admitted me as an expert witness on the subject of the Hawaiian Kingdom and international law. I also had a military service. I was a field artillery officer for 10 years. I was honorably discharged as a captain, so I have that background. Now, what I didn't share on the 15th was my personal ties to the Hawaiian Kingdom. Well, in the Kamakainana newspaper, 1896, they printed what is called Ma'uku au Hawa li'i, Chiefly Genealogies. On my dad's side, I'm a direct descendant of Puhai'a li'i, Ko'i'i. A Hawaiian chief is from Waipio, Hawaii. And from my mother's side, I'm a direct descendant of Luapana Simerson from Na'po'o po'o. In fact, in that same line that stands from Kanai Nanui, which is Kalani Manu'uka ho'o'waha, is the one that is known for possibly killing Captain Cook. So I guess it's in our family to be warriors. So there's the Kamakainana newspaper. An entire year of 1896, they were printing Ma'uku au Hawa li'i, okay, from the Board of Genealogists after the government was overthrown. The Kamakainana newspaper from 19, throughout 1896 was also the subject of reprint of Edith Mackenzie's Hawaiian Genealogy. Some people might know of that. It's a publication. And there is my third great-grandmother, Puhai'a li'i, Ko'i'i. She was also a chanter for King Kalakaua. And they say that that is where my Auntie Marlene Tsai, the singer, gets her voice from. That's within the family. And then Luapana Simerson, descendant of Lilu'a. Now, also, my great-grandfather, my tutu's father, William Kuakini Simerson, was one of the 14 pallbearers of Prince Kuhiyo's casket, who are identified in the commercial advertiser as 14 high-ranking chiefs of the Hawaiian Kingdom. So from a personal side, I have a direct tie. But also from an academic, from a military experience, I also have that in me as well. So recapping, back in 1895, Samuel Damon, who was a trustee for the Kamehameha Schools, stated in 1895, as a so-called member of the Republic of Hawaii, "If we're ever to have peace and annexation, the first thing to do is to obliterate the past." Obliterate the past. That term, denationalization, is basically the obliteration of the national consciousness of the people of an occupied state. And denationalization is actually a war crime. That's what Germans and Italians were committing during World War II and were prosecuted for that. Now, this denationalization that began early in the early 1900s has created an empty vessel of information. And we are now beginning to recover our memory, and that's through education. Well, Donald James Weal, a British novelist, says, "When a well-packaged web of lies has been sold gradually to the masses over generations, the truth will seem utterly preposterous and its speaker a raving lunatic." So these things have to be taken into consideration because we're dealing with over 100 years of false information that we're trying to decipher through. And a lot of times, it gets personal, right? Like for myself in the military, I came to the realization I was in the wrong army. But I didn't, not like my time in. In fact, my experience in has helped me become who I am today, especially the leadership qualities that they teach you as officers, right? So from 1999 to 2001, there was a court case at the Permanent Court of Arbitration, Lance Larson versus the Hawaiian Kingdom. The Permanent Court of Arbitration acknowledged the continued existence of the Hawaiian Kingdom as an independent state and also the Council of Regency as its provisional government. If that wasn't the case, the Permanent Court of Arbitration would not have allowed the case to go further. They had to ensure what they had was institutional jurisdiction. And these, these things that I'm speaking to are international rules, not local rules. So it's another aspect that we need to understand that things are beyond Hawaii, which may be perceived as just very parochial, when in fact Hawaii is part of an international system. There's another language at that level, as there's another language at the national, at the county, at the communal level. When we got back from the Netherlands, the purpose was to begin to expose the occupation and deal with denationalization. And that's when I entered the University of Hawaii as a graduate student. And all these publications began to blossom. A plethora of doctoral dissertations, master's theses, lodgeran articles, peer-reviewed articles, all being published. It's not just me. It's happening all over. Correcting Revision is History, this information that was being researched at the University of Hawaii had an effect on Tom Kaufman, who in 1998 came out with his book, Nation Within. The subtitle is The Story of America's Annexation of the Nation of Hawaii. That would be incorrect because Hawaii was never annexed, but rather occupied. In 2009, Tom Kaufman came out with his second edition and he changed the subtitle to The History of the American Occupation of Hawaii. So it had an effect on a very well-known historian named Tom Kaufman. And Tom actually knows me. He and I are good friends. And he told me he was going to change the subtitle because he couldn't deny the facts. But what held him back, he said, and he said, to be honest, he said, "'Cause I'm an American." And it was hard for me to admit this information. But he was encouraged by scholars at the University of Hawaii, which included myself, in bringing this information out. So in a note on the second edition, Tom says, "In making this change, I have embraced the logical conclusion of my research into the events of 1893 to 1898 in Honolulu and Washington. I am prompted to take this step by a growing body of historical work by a new generation of Native Hawaiian scholars." Now, he's going to cite a quote from my lodgeran article out of the University, out of the University of San Francisco School of Law. Dr. Keanu Tsai writes, "The challenge for the fields of political science, history, and law is to distinguish between the rule of law and the politics of power." And this is where we're now getting into, the effect and impact of this information. But you have to put it through a framework that does not allow it to go ballistic. And that's called the rule of law. Also, the Hawaii State Teachers Association in 2017 was able to get a resolution passed at the annual conference of the National Education Association, the largest union in the United States of public school teachers, over 3 million members. It says they were able to pass New Business Item 37, quote, "The NE will publish an article that documents the illegal overthrow of the Hawaiian monarchy in 1893, the prolonged illegal occupation of the United States in the Hawaiian Kingdom, and the harmful effects that the occupation has had on the Hawaiian people and resources of the land." And when these delegates returned home, I was approached by them and they asked if I could actually write those articles for them to be published by the National Education Association, which last year, April of 2018, was the first article, The Illegal Overthrow of the Hawaiian Kingdom Government. Ensuring in that article, we're talking about laws of war, FM 27-10, and the fact that you can overthrow a government without overthrowing the country. It's fully explained in that article. Followed by another article, in October of 2018, the US occupation of the Hawaiian Kingdom. And then the impact that this occupation has had on the Hawaiian people. And there I address denationalization, but also universal health care at Queen's Hospital, where all natives are supposed to get service at no cost. And how that changed when Hawaii got taken over. Also, I spoke about Perfect Title. In 1996, created a firestorm. And what we're saying there, and keep in mind, remember the raving lunatic? Says here, Perfect Title focused on criminal probe. Perfect Title has created chaos in Hawaii's real estate industry with its claim that current land titles are no good. The company reaches those conclusions using 19th-century Hawaiian Kingdom law, which it says is still in effect, and by searching property records dating to the 1840s. Now, the irony of that statement, it makes perfect sense today. In 1997, what? That's crazy. That's what education does, right? And Perfect Title gets raided. So we get arrested for theft, racketeering, and tax evasion. That's when you get hit for speaking the truth, right? Now, this raid came on the heels of a presentation that I gave at the Hawaii Prince Hotel put on by the Hawaii Developers Council. Over 500 people showed up. On this panel was David Peach, president of Title Guarantee Escrow, Bruce Graham from Ashford and Riston, also a law professor at the University of Hawaii that teaches land titles, Neil Halbert from Austin and Hunt Law Firm, representing Chicago Title Insurance Company, and an attorney from Bank of Hawaii to moderate, who is an attorney, and myself and Donald Lewis, the partner of Perfect Title. After the presentation, Bruce Graham comes up to me and he says, "Keanu, we need to talk." I said, "Okay, Bruce, what's up?" He says, "People are going to get hurt. You can't do this." I said, "Bruce, this is about land titles and title reports. That's all it is. And I sent you a title report from Perfect Title. All you need to do is to go line by line and refute it. That's all. And if you can refute it, get us on fraud or conspiracy." He says, "I can't refute it. It is historically and factually correct." So I said, "What's the problem?" He said, "America's here, and that's just the way it is." And my response was, "I didn't know America was engaged in title insurance." That was the issue. A week after, we get raided. Now, the newspapers start spreading lies about me, telling elderly people don't pay their mortgages, constantly shifting attention all over the place. And I got to tell you, racketeering? That's crazy. But nobody blinked an eye back then. In fact, I think a lot of people wanted us to get locked up. But as a trained officer, we call that incoming. It's called hit the ground because of the blast radius, right? So if anything, I don't have animosity, but I understand the reaction. But accountability also is still coming as well. The Royal Commission of Inquiry was established. This is part of the recap of what we covered on May 15. And this Commission of Inquiry, its function is to investigate, to investigate the consequences of the belligerent occupation of the Hawaiian Kingdom by the United States since 1893. The purpose shall be investigate, shall be to investigate the consequences of the United States' belligerent occupation, including with regard to international law, humanitarian law, and human rights and the allegations of war crimes committed in that context. Under Article 3, the composition of the Royal Commission shall be decided by the head, which is myself, and shall be comprised of recognized experts in various fields, international law, humanitarian law, human rights law, self-determination, legal and political history. I can assure you that this commission is all European. And they are all renowned experts in their areas who have all committed to being a part of this Commission of Inquiry. And the chair can confirm that they have been convened. Now, the different war crimes that's going to be under investigation by this Commission of Inquiry is, one, denationalization, pillaging, unlawful appropriation of property, depriving a protected person of fair and regular trial, destruction of property, unlawful confinement of a protected person, removing protected persons from the country, and involuntary conscription into the United States Armed Forces, which is the draft, okay? That's actually all illegal. So this was just a wrap-up of what was covered on May 15, okay? Now, we're going to move to the next step, the impact.
The Hawaiian subjects, Hawaiian nationals, they're fervent about what they want. There's no questioning that. But on the flip side, there's also 100 years of training, you know? And an old guy in Waimea told us, you know, about the elephant. When the baby elephant is small, they chain him to the stick with a chain, a big, huge chain. And after years of trying to break that chain, he figures out that they can't do it. And when that big elephant, when the elephant gets big, they just tie a little rope on his leg and tie it to the stick. And the smallest, the smallest resistance will stop that elephant from trying. He can break it. It just takes one step like that. And, you know, for us, that's exactly how it is. All you got to do is take the step because that chain is just a rope. And it's all in our minds, you know?
I didn't hesitate. It was for me a no-brainer. I said, "Yes, I'll be there." And the first day of the proceedings, literally, as I'm, I'm an attorney. And for six years, early in my career, I was a district court judge. I have always been a history buff, a student of history, a student of political science. But that first day at The Hague, the proceedings, literally took my breath away. I recognize that in over a century, the question of the Kingdom of Hawaii as a nation-state in the family of nations was not at issue. And I was kind of like, wow, where are we? And what are the ramifications of these proceedings?
We didn't understand the significance of what that meant, right? That's the significance between occupation and colonization, right? Two very, very, and this is the interesting thing, right? They look very similar on the surface, but they're very different, right? And for me, this is where the precision, right? The precision of observation, right? You go back to traditional Hawaiian times and they observed everything. A rain that came this direction was different than a rain that came from this direction. A rain that hit your skin this hard was a different, had a different name than a rain that hit your skin this hard, right? And owama is different than a veke, right? All the life stages of a fish had names, right? Today, it's a fish, right? Back then, it was an owama. Then it was this, then it was that, then it's a veke, right? You name your fish, they all had that kind of, that attention to detail, right? Today, we're a lot less precise with that. And I think that's a good metaphor for the difference in precision between occupation and colonization. Ah, yeah, they, both got land, both got people. Yeah, but one's politically different than the other. Not better, different, right? And that acknowledgement of that difference is... And, and that acknowledgement of that difference is crucial.
I, I can say that I have not had one instance in court where there's been any opposition to either the factual, the legal or historical arguments that we made concerning the legal status of the Hawaiian Kingdom.
So anyway, we've gotten a little bit away from Hawaiian Kingdom and onto like, why is an American involving themselves in a Hawaiian Kingdom issue? Well, because as an American patriot, I think it's in my country's interest for it to not be here.
Hawaii's legal and political history today is, is much more complex. It's much more nuanced, in part because we have a much better understanding of what took place in the 19th century. And so a lot of that, right? A lot of just the, the basic daily conversations that we have, whether it be on the streets or whether it be with family, the way that we talk about Hawaii has changed.
A legitimate legislative assembly to review all the laws, et cetera. How do we operate in the meantime?
Right. No, no, I got your point, excellent point because Mike McCartney was asking those same questions in my meeting with him.